Good evening. This is the City of Everett Planning Commission meeting for October 19, 2021. We'll call this meeting to order, and Kathy, could you please do a roll call?
Thank you. Chair Yanisak?
Here.
Commissioner Holland?
Here.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Here.
Commissioner Lavra?
Here.
Commissioner McGinn?
Here.
Commissioner Atkins?
Here.
Thank you.
Do we also have Commissioner Finch on the line?
Indeed, I'm here. Thanks.
Oh, you are there.
One more. Okay. Uh, thank you. Welcome, everybody. Just have some brief instructions. Planning Commission meetings do remain remote for the time being. If you are accessing this meeting via phone, please be aware there is about a 10-second delay on the broadcast and stream. If you wish to download the presentation materials or wish to comment and need to see the visual in real time, please visit everettwa.gov/PlanningCommission. I would like to remind anyone participating to please mute your microphone, or if you are calling in, mute your phone by pressing star six until called upon. Thank you for your patience, and stay tuned for more information about bringing the Planning Commission back to in-person meetings. With that, I'll ask if commissioners have had a chance to review the minutes from our October 5 meeting, and if anybody has any requests or recommendations for changes or additions. Perhaps a motion to approve then.
This is Commissioner Zalinski. I would move approval of the October 5 meeting minutes.
Commissioner Holland? Second. Thank you, Commissioner Holland. Uh, let's go ahead and have a vote on that. Kathy?
Thank you. Commissioner Atkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Abstained.
Commissioner Lavra?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Chair Yanisak?
Yes. Do we have any report? Thank you. Do we have any reports from commission members? Okay, how about staff comments? York?
Thank you, Chair. A few comments today. The city council passed the Rethink Housing Action Plan on October 6. We hoped that would be the case at our last meeting, and indeed it was. Um, I want to thank the Planning Commission, all of you, for all of your hard work on that project, and of course, do thanks to the Housing Advisory Committee. I believe some of the members of the Planning Commission also served on that advisory committee, double duty and extra work, much appreciated. Uh, and a shout out to all the members of the public who participated in chat sessions and otherwise provided their input and expertise, and took time out of their busy lives to, uh, in service of, uh, in service of housing in our city. And then, of course, congratulations to Becky and the team for completing a huge project, a ton of work over a long period of time. Um, and heart and soul went into that project. Uh, now, of course, that's just a change in the phase from the action planning to the implementation part of it, which is no shortage of hard work there, too. We did start, I think it was the very following day after the council approved the Housing Action Plan, we submitted an application to the Department of Commerce for a Housing Action Plan Implementation Grant that, uh, is, i-if we're successful, would support a detailed review and update of the city's housing development incentives, including the multifamily tax exemptive pro-incentive program. Uh, there was some legislative changes in last year's session that provided some options for the city to expand and otherwise tailor its multifamily tax exemption programs. We'd like to take advantage of that and get some good advice along the way. Also, look at some of our height density bonuses that we have on the books, fee reductions and waivers, one of which is a topic of conversation this evening. And then also look at what other sort of incentives for housing development might be out there that we might be able to tap going forward. So fingers crossed that we'll be successful in attracting those grant funds and getting to work on that Housing Action Plan. The council was very interested in implementation and how we would turn all of those, uh, good plans, good ideas, good data into action. Um, that grant is one piece of that. A lot of the work is going to be folded into our Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update that's coming up. Uh, but also you'll see at the, uh, last item on today's agenda is, um, the first in a series that we're going to be working on, calling, uh, dubbing refining, rethink zoning. Um, as staff have had about a year now to work with the new code language in rethink zoning and apply it to projects. I've been keeping track of, of opportunities to clarify and, uh, and improve upon and simplify in some cases that, that code language. And, uh, we did tell the council that, uh, while the main intent of this series of ordinances, the first one before you today, is going to be non-substantive and non-policy changes that are just looking really at clarification, we will, uh, at the council's behest, look for opportunities to hit some of those early action items as part of that. We will always be upfront with you and others, uh, which changes are intended to just clarify or increase consistency versus one that are an actual change in policy, such as those that are, uh, anticipated under the Rethink Housing Action Plan. Uh, but we saw that as an opportunity and also a way to take a little bit of the pressure off of what is going to be a massive project in the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update, uh, hoping to kick that off, uh, in January, and that will come to dominate, uh, all of our lives for the next couple of years. So, um, I think that's it on, on the rethink housing. So just thanks again to everyone who played, played a part in that. A great piece of work, a lot of helpful data, a lot of insight in the public, uh, comments and participation that were gathered through that. And we will, uh, take that plan and put it to use right away. Uh, don't think I've given you an update on Sound Transit, uh, light rail extension, uh, in a bit. The, uh, the agency, Sound Transit, has kicked off the formal public participation effort and that, that part of the link light rail extension to Everett. They opened a website last week, I believe. Uh, it is Everett Link. That's one word, dot participate dot online. I'm sure you can use your favorite search engine to navigate there as well. And, uh, commission members and anyone else who's listening, um, start firing away at Sound Transit with your, uh, your thoughts, opinions, hopes, dreams, ideas, concerns, fears, and all of the above. They will fold that into the planning process. They'll share that information with, uh, with the city staff, who will in turn, will, we will fold some of those, uh, those thoughts and hopes and dreams into the Comprehensive Plan Update. A formal, uh, formal early scoping period is coming. It'll start on November 1 and last for about a month through December 3. During that time, this is a, a, a formal step during which the agency will seek input on the purpose and need for the project. Uh, you might think that that was obvious or automatic because the voters approved it, but, uh, but we really need to, to put down on paper, what is the real purpose and need, and that helps inform all the planning work that goes on subsequently. So important to get that right. Um, they'll be seeking input also on the representative project that is in the S-T 3 package that went to vote to voters, as well as other potential alternatives. And then look at some of the potential project benefits and impacts, and a lot of the scoping information defines what gets studied in the environmental impact statement and throughout the process. So, an important early step. I will try to keep, uh, to keep you up to speed with that effort. Lastly, on that point, recruitment is underway for a community advisory group that will advise, uh, Sound Transit and, uh, the partners working on that light rail extension throughout the life of the project. You can find information on that at the website, that everettlink-participate.online. Uh, the, uh, the Homish County Tomorrow Planning Advisory Committee acted to recommend and forward its recommendation on growth targets to the Snohomish County Tomorrow Steering Committee. That, uh, steering committee, which is the, the full body official, uh, policy body for Snohomish County Tomorrow, which is the group of cities within Snohomish County, the county and two local tribes, uh, that advises the county council on regional planning matters. That, uh, that elected group will take up the recommendation next Wednesday evening. I mentioned these targets before. They haven't changed since the spring, I believe, was when we brought a formal item on buildable lands and mentioned some of those targets. Everett is in a class of its own as a metropolitan city in the regional geography system. So, uh, we haven't done some of the negotiating with other cities that, uh, that other cities have been doing, and some of those numbers have fluctuated over time. Ours have been steady and significant. Uh, the growth numbers in the targets that are going to the steering committee are 179,000 people. This would be growth to that number in 2044, and 167,000 jobs by 2044. We're at about 112,000 people and 100,000 jobs right now. So roughly 60,000, 70,000 people and jobs, uh, would be coming to Everett over the next, uh, 27-year period uh, under these growth targets. No small, no small feat, and that adds to the big task that we'll be facing with our Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update next year. If those targets hold through the steering committee and then on through the county council, uh, then that is our marching orders for a Comprehensive Plan Update. And our job will be to design a plan that accommodates and plans for that growth while maintaining everything it is that we love about Everett, and best capitalizing on some of the new, uh, positive additions to the community that would come as a result of this growth. Those are just a couple updates that came to mind today. Um, a, an operational note, um, I would love to, uh, it occurred to me recently that I have, uh, yet to meet many of you, and I have yet to actually even see many of you, uh, on camera. I know we've had some technical issues that were preventing us from having these meetings with the cameras on between staff and the commission in the past. Um, I think we have been able to alleviate some of those technical issues. I will confirm that. But, uh, if the commission is open to it, um, it would be nice, uh, I, we, we go through the statement at the beginning of the meeting every time, and we are still remote, and next two weeks from now, we will still be remote, and two weeks after that, we will still be remote. Still hoping that relief is around the corner from, uh, from COVID, but it's turning out to be a long, a long corner. So in the meantime, as, as this is becoming a longer and longer interim period, it would be great to, uh, have some of that social connection and, and, uh, non-verbal that comes with having cameras on. So I will, uh, either myself or Kathy or both of us will reach out to each one of you commissioners individually. Want to make sure that if we, if we do go this direction, that everyone is comfortable with it, and that it is fair and equitable, and we're not shutting some people out because of technical issues or otherwise. So we'll reach out to each one of you individually between now and the next meeting to scope out how that might work and make sure we've got any technical issues out of the way. But just know that that is a, uh, goal and a hope of mine, uh, to, to get us into a little bit more of a, of a team and collaborative atmosphere, especially as we have more and more significant items coming our way. That's the end of my remarks. Thank you. Happy to take any questions, of course, as with any meeting.
Commissioner, any questions? Great. Thank you, York. All good information. Uh, before we move into the scheduled agenda items, I would ask if there's any, uh, members of the public here tonight who are wishing to address the commission on any matters that are not already scheduled, uh, now would be the opportunity to, to do that. So is there, if, if there is anybody here from the public wanting to do that, I would say maybe just go ahead and unmute yourself and introduce yourself, and we can get to your, your question or comment. All right, I'm not seeing anybody popping in. So with that, let's go ahead and jump into our agenda. Uh, we do have, uh, item 6A, which is the matter for which we had a public hearing on October 5. I believe we did close the, um, public hearing after that matter. It was a, um, for the comprehensive plan use designation for 7500 Artisan Road. So this is not, no longer a public hearing, but York, did you have some additional, um, presentation on that?
Just the briefest of recaps, 7500 Artisan Road. We touched on this at multiple meetings in the past. Uh, one and a third acres, uh, proposed rezone from light industrial to, to business and re-land des- land use designation in the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map from industrial to commercial mixed use. The nation is to approve Resolution 2103.
Okay, any commission discussion? Commissioners, additional questions, comments? Would any, oh, Commissioner Zalinski, is that, back to your hand?
Yes, thank you, Chair Yanisak. I just had one question on the wording in the proposed Resolution 2103. Under sec-section 8 of that, uh, there's a comment, it's, uh, it talks about these map amendments with the continuation of residential development. And I was wondering if that should be commercial development or non-residential development instead of residential.
Thank you, Commissioner Zalinski. Good catch. This appears to be a case of copy paste. I would recommend just deleting, just delete. I don't think we need it. And you're right, it is not applicable to this case. So I, uh, a motion could be, uh, depending if there are any other questions or issues, a motion could be to approve the resolution. Oh, Becky?
Um, I just, um, we might want to keep eight in there because that is a criteria. And I think, uh, in the code, which is why I think we included it in the resolution. Um, so we could just, uh, cross out residential and, and put, uh, commercial, non-residential. Is my thought.
Sure. We're gonna have to do a little more wordsmithing in that case. So how about a middle ground of end it after map amendments? Uh, because I don't think it's served by transit.
If the commission, um, if the commission agrees, that would work.
We certainly have our eyes on public health, safety, and welfare.
Yep.
So a-
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yeah, um, a motion could be to approve the resolution revising recital 8 to end after the word amendments.
Commissioner Zalinski, any other questions or comments?
No, I would be prepared to offer a motion to approve the resolution with the change as suggested by staff.
Thank you. Uh, do we have a second?
Happy to second the motion.
Mr. Finch, thank you. With that, let's go ahead and put it to a vote. So the, uh, a vote on whether to approve Resolution 2103 with the, uh, change after recital 8, uh, as recommended by staff. Kathy, go ahead and, and call through?
Commissioner Ada- Atkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Chair Yanisak?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So let's, uh, move on to our next agenda item, 6B, the Smith Island Annexation Map Amendment. And, uh, this matter, the public hearing did remain open, so we still are in, uh, the public hearing on this matter. So, um, York, did you have some additional presentation?
Yeah, uh, very brief on this, with the, with the exception of, uh, covering the questions that came up at the last Planning Commission meeting. So again, this is making two changes to maps, uh, to catch up with an annexation that was effective earlier this year. The first change is to the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map and would remove the resource land designation from submerged lands or lands underneath the ordinary high watermark from the Smith Island Annexation area. And then the second one would be to extend the, uh, maximum building height map to cover the annexation area. When the annexation was, uh, when the annexation was, was made effective, we established a Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use for it of, uh, industri- heavy industri- no, industrial? Yes, industrial, final answer. And extended a zoning to that area of heavy industrial. We did not extend the building heights map to that area, and so it's been blank since the annexation has been effective. Staff proposes to extend the same seven-story height limit to the western portion of Smith Island that is in effect for the rest of Smith Island. Commissioners had a great question, um, two weeks ago about the origin of the seven-story height limit for the rest of Smith Island, uh, and why that would be appropriate to extend to the western portion. We did some historic research. This, uh, the, 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 the rest of Smith Island that is part of the city now was annexed in the mid-eighties. There has been a series of zone changes, and this is a complicated area. It is, uh, overlapped between, um, the development regulations, the Comprehensive Plan, and the Shoreline Master Program. All of the above regulate development within this annexation area. The short version is to where, how we got to seven floors is that before rethink zoning, there was no maximum building height map, and every zone had a maximum height attached to it. Before rethink zoning, this was the M2. I think it, it was called Heavy Industrial, the M2 Zone, and that had a height limit of 75 feet. And so when we established the building height map as part of rethink zoning, that 75-foot height limit was extended, uh, to seven floors, which is, uh, 80. Get this right. It previously allowed 80 feet, and seven floors is 75 feet. So basically took the nearest number of floors to the maximum building height that had been in effect prior to rethink zoning, so made no changes. The Shoreline Master Program, and, and this is all in the, uh, question and answer memorandum that is in your packets. The Shoreline Master Program also establishes policies and regulations that any development must hold to, uh, in this area. And there is a requirement that any building or structure within 200 feet of the water line that is in excess of 35 feet shall show that it will not obstruct the view of residences with a few exceptions. And then also that developments should be designed to reduce or minimize impacts on scenic vistas or shoreline areas while accommodating proposals objective, and that public views of shoreline areas should be preserved. So there are some protections that, uh, to view type things that are in the shoreline policies. There are quite a few other policies and regulations that would apply to development here. Uh, but the short answer as to why seven feet is that that's what was there before rethink zoning. Uh, before rethink zoning, there was a long series of slightly different zones and overlays that addressed, uh, the flood hazard, um, characteristics of portions of Smith Island shoreline policies and all of that. Since the very first annexation into the city, though, all of Smith Island has been designated for and anticipated significant industrial development. I will note that the building height map, um, hearing seven floors, might put into folks' mind a seven-story building with, with floors and elevators and all that. I think more likely in Smith Island, it is going to be industrial structures that extend to that 75-foot height limit. So think, uh, grain silos, or I think there's asphalt batch plants in the neighborhood. Uh, Cedar Grove composting facilities, cranes, antennas, maybe a smokestack, things like that. Uh, more likely than actual seven-story buildings, although that would, uh, that could potentially be allowed if the flood regulations, Shoreline Master Plan regulations and policies could be adhered to, as well as utilities. So I hope that provides a little bit of insight. Did appreciate the question. I learned from it, and hopefully you did, too. And then staff recommendation remain, remains to approve Resolution 2104. Uh, but happy to take any follow-up questions on the, on the height limit or anything else, recognizing that my historic knowledge of Smith Island is, is a bit limited.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioners, any additional questions or comments or discussion? All right, since we still are in a public meeting, I would ask if there's anybody from the public, uh, here who wish to address the commission on this Smith, Smith Island Annexation Map Amendment. And if you are, just go ahead and unmute yourself and introduce yourself. Okay, it looks like there's none, uh, and with no, no additional commissioners then. I, I would move that, uh, we close the public hearing. We have a second?
I have a second, ma'am.
Commissioner McGinn, thank you. Uh, Kathy, let's go ahead and have a vote as to closing the, the public hearing.
Commissioner Atkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Chair Yanisak?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that carries, the, the public hearing is closed. With that, it's been, uh, presented, uh, Resolution 2104. Are there any commissioners who, uh, would like to make a motion to approve?
Commissioner Atkins motions to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Mr. Finch, thank you. Kathy, go ahead and call us a vote, please.
Commissioner Atkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra?
No.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Chair Yanisak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. So we have one more matter, uh, still in public hearing. That's item 6C, the Comprehensive Plan Parks Development and Parks Impact Ease. That, do we have a presentation on that?
We do. Uh, a little bit more on this, since there were a couple issues remaining at the end of the last, uh, meeting. We have, uh, Bob Leonard, Parks Director, and Lisa Bruder with Burke Consulting, who are going to, uh, I think the three of us are gonna work our way through this. I believe Lisa is gonna start it off with a few question, uh, answers that she, uh, pulled together along with, uh, city staff help from the last Planning Commission.
Sorry for being muted. Uh, Lisa Greer with Burke Consulting. Also, um, we have Jason Hennessy with Burke here as well. Also, we have Jason Hennessy with Burke here as well. But as noted on this slide here, we're just making note of the responses to questions that came from the last meeting on October 5th. One had to do with having more examples of fee stacking, and in this case, it was about the range of city fees that apply, and, and a range of projects were presented in addition to the ones we presented previously that were industrial and apartments. So there were more examples provided. And there was a question about what would the fee mean for a single-family home? So we made that more directly clear and assumed a three-bedroom home and applied that, that fee. So that was informational items that we provided back to the commission. And then York, we had a couple of clarifications that we sent along with the revised packet. One were some clarifications to the parks and recreation element as we have been putting the PROS Plan together and trying to keep up between both documents, but generally same principles and concepts in that document. In the fee and lieu component, which is related to the common open space that is privately provided, there's more language that identifies how that could work. And one of the things we were trying to correct is that there's a different part of the state law for fee and lieu, and you have to spend it within five years, whereas the impact fee is within ten years. So we're doing a little text cleanup there.
And I'll interject quickly, and I'll first take responsibility for having changed the five years to ten years without doing the full research. It seemed like matching the impact fee period was, was the right way to go. I overlooked that section of state law. Doubly embarrassing is that when I went back to fix the five years to ten years, it says it twice in the same section, so we'll get to this in a moment. But there's a second time that the ten needs to be changed to five. Excuse me.
Oh, no problem, thank you. So our next slide is to share a couple of changes. As I've mentioned, we've been working with the Parks Department on the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan. And as we've been doing that, been tinkering a little bit with some of the common language that's between the Parks Element and the PROS Plan. So the only substantive change is one of the actions at the end of the Parks Element is being replaced. So the red text there is what would be removed, which is about recreation programming. And what would be in its place is developing an asset management plan for the golf courses, which is related to policy concepts that are already in that draft element. So it's, it's just connecting the action item to the policy. And then as York previewed, in some of the, the elements in the code, as things have been evolving and we've received some clarifications, corrections, we're proposing to make just minor non-substantive changes, but that improve clarifications. And you'll see the arrow pointing to what York was just mentioning in the fee and lieu, for example, is correcting every place it should say five to five instead of ten. There's other similar kinds of things, as the park element has been in parallel with the PROS Plan. And then in the impact fee, I believe, York, there's been some clarifications that don't change the intent, but they just improve the interpretation.
That's correct. So this, this slide covers a couple changes. That first one, replacing the action, does feel like an actual change in, in tone or policy. It's substantive important for the commission to see that change. It is, this is again after your packet. This is things that we would provide to the, to the council in their package that, that they receive. The rest of those, the clarification and consistency edits, some we have noticed, some Commissioner Finch noticed a, a couple of, of issues where it was unclear in the language. I'm trying to balance the need for integrity, so you see the progression of this through your work on it and know exactly what has changed with both your time and your attention to the important policy-related pieces of this. So our proposal is that you trust that these changes that we'll make after the packet, after you have seen it, but before the council gets it, are clarifications and consistencies and do not make material changes to the application of the park impact fees or the park planning or anything like that. That said, if you would, and I, we will put together a document that shows all of these changes in details. Wanted to leave it open for whatever comes up out of this meeting and, and maybe even in the next couple of days. But we will prepare a memo that covers every single change that is not in your packets today. That said, if commissioners would like to go through the wording changes, which are along the same lines as what you see on that screen where we didn't notice the second ten years in there, we are prepared to do so. So otherwise, again, happy to go over those if there is a request. Otherwise, we will, we will carry forward.
So our, our final slide here on this sort of recap is to recognize there were some questions at the last meeting around the phasing. And in your packet and the response to questions, we put in some information about how other communities face the fees. Because there was a public comment last time about referencing Kirkland, and we also showed Linwood as another example. The proposal before you is, is the same as what was on October 5th, which is to phase it over twelve months. We recognized that was a question, and we provided an answer and information in your packet in case there's further discussion. And then in terms of the fee reduction for low-income housing, that is still as proposed in the October 5th packet. That aligns with other city policies and the comp plan around recognizing the need to address fees for affordable housing. And, and so that's before you, but again, there may be some questions or discussion that come up on that, on that topic.
Thank you, Lisa. Yeah, just, just to expand a bit on that, we, we heard the comments. We didn't make changes on staff's end in response to those comments. Wanted to make sure that the whole Planning Commission had the ability to make those recommendations. But we will certainly forward whatever recommendations. This is your time to deliberate and, and vote and come up with any changes that the commission recommends from the, from what the staff proposal was. And we'll forward that along to the council, and we'll make the final call. I think we've got the staff recommendation here, but certainly open to, to reopen any point of discussion, answer any questions. We can bring back other materials to the, to the screen here if it helps. But we turn to the commission to take us from here.
Great, thank you. Any commissioners with follow-up questions, comments, any other discussion? Commissioner, Mr. Finch?
Thank you. And staff, thank you for answering all of the questions that were posed at the last meeting. I thought that was very helpful. On the two outstanding issues, phasing and impact fee reduction for affordable housing. On the phasing, I guess I would like to see a more gradual rollout, something in the order of magnitude of eighteen to twenty-four months as opposed to twelve. I, I think that to the extent that there is, to the extent there are any projects out there that are being contemplated, it may spur them to move forward quickly, which I think would serve efforts and serve the housing needs that we know we have. And so I would encourage my fellow commissioners to consider extending that period from twelve to eighteen or twenty-four months. On the, on the affordable housing component, it strikes me that, that the, the users of affordable housing, the residents, would be using parks just as much as any office user, potentially more. And I don't know that a reduced fee or even the elimination of a fee, park impact fee, has any real bearing on whether or not an affordable housing project moves forward. These are not projects that, you know, pencil from an economic perspective. And so I, I don't think that really a, a change in the park impact fee moves the needle at all, one way or the other, but it definitely would make a difference as relates to populating the amount of funds available for expansion of capacity. So that would be, my recommendation would be to strike, I think it's Section 7 from the proposed code.
Thank you. I guess maybe I, could I ask the staff if any comments or response to either of those proposals? Just that maybe point, counterpoint, or?
Yeah, I, you know, I would, I'll, I'll take them in reverse order. With the reduction for, the reduction of fee for low-income housing, this is an option that is, that is included in state law. So it's specifically put out there for local jurisdictions to take if they want or, or not if they don't. We do have an action in rethink housing that reads, explore options for reducing fees and impact fees for low-income housing. We do have a, what is it? I want to be careful with my words here. I think it is a potential implementation action in the Comprehensive Plan Housing Element that says something similar. So both offer, it doesn't say do fee waivers, it says explore them, but it gives an indication that in the Comprehensive Plan and rethink housing, that both went through the Planning Commission and through the, through the council, that there is an, an interest at least in providing fee waivers for affordable housing. Essentially, those, those fees, it's a tension between, you know, the point is that everybody does use parks and the, the future residents of, of low, housing that is reserved for low-income households will certainly use those parks as well. We have needs in the parks world, we have needs in the affordable housing world. This fee waiver is a way to, to try to, to try to help out our, our housing needs. It would be the, the fees not collected from that affordable housing development would not be available for parks. Potentially, that would result in another unit or two of affordable housing available in the community. And so really, it is a policy choice, and not an easy one, between two important goals in the city, providing sufficient housing for all economic segments, including those not being served in the private market, and providing quality parks for all. Those are, that is a tough one. That one is squarely in the policy, in the policy realm. And you saw the staff initially proposed to, to keep it in, I think, consistent with some of those provisions in the Comprehensive Plan and in recognition of the, of the real steep challenges that we and the rest of the region have in the affordable housing world. But we also completely understand that the need for parks and for parity in impact fees as well.
York, if I might, on the fee phasing, and I think the staff recommendation was over the twelve-month period, allow. That, that was part of the initial packaging. I think that still makes sense in terms of zero at the beginning, half, you know, the reduced fee in six months, and then the full fee in twelve months. Given the size of the fee, I guess I, other commissioners are interested in a different phasing. I, I wouldn't see going for twelve months. But probably nothing more than eighteen months.
I, I just want to remind everybody, Lisa, thank you for that, that, you know, we are offering our fee at a, at a fifty percent reduction from the original hundred percent fee that we had talked about. And I think that with the combination of just a severely reduced fee, we felt that the shorter phasing was appropriate.
Yeah, and the, the fee phasing is really there to, to address the situation where a project is well underway and the financial pro forma has been complete, and there's an expectation of a certain cost of development. And having a, an abrupt change, an abrupt new impact fee, let's say if it was a hundred percent on the effective date, that's, that, that can be unfair to a development that has been predicated on a certain cost structure. Not that other costs don't always change, like materials and lumber and labor and all those other sorts of things. So that was the reason for the phase-in period. It does seem to staff like the, the phase-in period of free for six months and then half-price for, for another six months after that was reasonable. As Bob and Lisa said, increasing it a little bit could be, could increase that kind of fairness aspect. It does delay collections and reduce ultimate collections of park impact fee on the city's end. That's the trade-off there. And I think this phase-in period is roughly in line with most of what I see for fee increases and new kind of impacts on development and financials. I see a couple of questions.
Yeah, I saw a couple pop up. I see Commissioner Holland with your hand up now. We'll get back to everybody here. Commissioner Holland, go ahead.
Sorry to cut in front of you there, Commissioner Zalinski, but just a question for you, York. Vesting-wise, so if I were to come submit tomorrow for a project, am I vested to no impact fees or is the vesting date when I actually submit my building permit?
Yeah, vesting does not apply to impact fees in the, in the strict, the strict term of, of vesting. So in, in this case, in a development, the fees are assessed when you have a complete building permit application and then paid when you pick up that building permit. So the building permit application is pretty far down the road of a development. So hopefully that helps. It's, it's when you submit a complete building permit application. So if it's a very small project, that might be your project. If it's a large project, that's gonna be eighty percent down the line. And just before construction.
Understood, that, that's kind of what I thought, and I appreciate that. And I would just like to, for my last comment is to concur with Commissioner Finch's comment related to the affordable housing, and I think everybody needs to be equitable for their development. Within the city of Everett, has, they all have the same impacts on our parks and cities.
Thank you, Commissioner Holland. And I remember, did I see Commissioner Zalinski putting your hand up?
Yes, you did. Just a couple of comments and a question on the subject of the, of the phase-in. Given the relatively low impact fees that are being proposed here, I think the one-year rollout is plenty sufficient. So I'm, I'm prepared to support it as prepared, as proposed by staff. On the subject of waivers for, for low-income housing, my question has to do with how we handle this for the other impact fees, because to me, it should be handled the same. So if transportation fees are waived or if school fees are waived, then it would be appropriate to also waive the park fees.
Unless Lisa or Bob or Becky has that at the tip of their fingers, I can look that up quickly while we continue the conversation.
Yeah, I can answer that, Becky McCrery. So we do allow for traffic impact fees are reduced at eighty percent for low-income housing. We do allow some of our planning application fees are also waived for low-income housing. As we also have a reduction for special connection charges, so those are water and sewer connections. We allow a We allow a waiver for those fees up to 80% as well. Those could be fairly substantial and those are directly tied to the development. So if, as long as the development stays in low income housing, those fees for special connection charges are not due. But if there becomes a change of use, excuse me, the fees are due and they would come into the city. And then finally, the school impact fees in the city's code, there is an allowance for waiver. However, the waiver final decision for that is with, lies with the school district. So they would have to also approve the waiver for those fees.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you, staff.
Then you say, I guess I could just clarify then, did, Becky, did I understand you said that there's not a complete waiver? It's only up to 80% of the fee that's waived?
Correct. And I believe that's what's proposed in the park impact fees as well. That's the threshold under state law.
Yeah, in the park impact fee as proposed, if, if the housing is to be sold or rented to a family making 80% of the county's median income, the fee reduction would be 40% off. And then if it is for 50% AMI, then it would be 80% off, 50% AMI.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, so it's a sliding scale. 80% would be the maximum. And that would need to be kept in use for low income housing for 50 years. I think that came up in a previous meeting, a question about how long the, the property must be kept for that. So it's pretty, pretty long-term commitment to below market rate housing.
Commissioner Zalinski, do you have any additional questions or follow up?
No, those questions answer, or those responses from staff answered my questions. Thank you.
And I see Commissioner Finch, but I think Commissioner Lavra, I thought earlier had tried to put her hand up. Commissioner Lavra, do you have a question or comment as well?
I was actually going to say something about whether the public meeting was still, or hearing was still considered open. That was the.
Yeah, yes. Yes, it is still open and we will, we will ask, I will ask for some additional public comment once, once we get through with commissioners. Anything else? Commissioner Lavra?
Well, I'm, I had some questions, but I don't know whether there are things that were covered before. I was a little confused by something I read and I read it a couple of days ago about how the, for single family, how, how those fees are established. It said just per bedroom, per number of bedrooms, or was that just the example they were talking, talking about?
The, the fee is based on per bedroom basis. And so our example for a single family was using a recent permit in the city for a three-bedroom home as the example.
Right, so, so it could be a $1.5 million house or a $300,000 house and they pay the same?
Right. The idea is based on occupancy of those rooms and not necessarily the value of the home.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Finch?
Thank you. A question for staff. I guess in your professional opinion, do you think that the fee reduction for parks impact fees would, would contribute to the development of more affordable housing within the city? And the reason I ask is because when you think about where the dollars come from to build affordable housing and the cost to build the housing, it, it strikes me that the fees assessed are not a material component of the overall budget. And so I wonder if this is really in any way deterring the creation of additional affordable housing by treating this housing like any other housing.
I, I mean, I would have to think that in general, when you reduce the cost of producing something, you'd get more of that thing. Whether it's going to be a noticeable number of units or even any more units in a single project, a developer, affordable housing developer, nonprofit could take the money saved maximum or maximize the development potential in Everett and take the money saved and build an additional affordable housing unit in another jurisdiction. But in general, if you reduce the cost by $1,800 for each two-bedroom apartment in a 100 apartment complex, that would, should be enough money to fund a couple of extra units. So in general, I would think it would lead to more affordable housing subsidized or income qualified. But whether it would be a larger, I don't, it's not going to, it's not going to solve our problems.
I guess I would just concur with that and, and add that it, it could have an impact on a project financing for sure. Given that affordable housing projects are so complex in terms of their financing and the number of sources that they have. So would it deter development? Possibly, probably not. But it certainly could, as York said, contribute to additionally units or unit and potentially reduce, you know, a funding source that, that they're seeking.
The criteria in 7A do require that kind of information to be submitted that Becky mentioned. It's a middle of a fiscal impact analysis of how the fee reduction would contribute to the creation of low income housing. Something like that. You'd have to provide that plus meet the 50-year standard.
I'll, I'll just add a, a little notice that hopefully, again, fingers crossed, we get this grant. This is exactly the kind of more detailed financial information that we'll be looking at. We are trying to incentivize housing production at all price points, market rate, luxury, affordable, deeply subsidized. There are different tools for each of those. All of them are needed and make a positive impact on the city. And if, if we get that grant, we'll hire some consultants to look specifically at this and other incentives like it. Density bonuses for the same kind of affordable housing set aside. So don't rely on that as you make your decision because for one, the grant may not come through. And either way, we want to get it as right as possible now. But know that we're very interested in learning more about this very topic.
Great, thank you.
Any other commissioner questions or comments? Since we are still, the public hearing is still open, I will open it up at this point. See if there are any members of the public here who were wishing to address the commission. If you are here on this topic and have something you'd like to say, I don't think we have a huge crowd. So maybe just go ahead and unmute yourself and identify yourself and we can sort it out and hear from you. Any members of the public, go ahead and unmute yourself if you want to speak. All right, I'm not seeing anybody. Okay, any, back to the commissioners then, any other final, before we close, potentially close the public hearing? Any additional commissioner questions or comments or anything else from staff?
Cherry Yanisak, this is Commissioner Holland. I would just recommend that we close the public hearing and have additional deliberations between the planning commission.
Thank you. Can we have a second?
This is Commissioner Zalinski. I would second that motion.
Thank you. Kathy, could you please call, do a roll call?
Commissioner Atkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Cherry Yanisak?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, with that, the public hearing is closed and the matter before us is the proposed resolution 2106. I guess I had, do you have a question? Did we skip over 2105?
We did. Rethink Housing got in there between the drafting of the first two resolutions and the third one.
Got it. Okay, understood. So obviously there've been a few matters raised today, commissioners. Commissioner Holland, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, thank you, Cherry Yanisak. I just wanted to thank staff and Bob and everybody for putting together this plan. I, it, it's a lot of great work and I know Lisa and the team at Burke, they do wonderful work as well. And so just the responses that you gave to the commission was great to see. Personally, I, I support the, the rollout of the reduction as it's proposed. But I would recommend that we do not waive impact fees for affordable or low income housing.
Thank you. Any, any other commissioners? Want to, want to comment or weigh in on anything? Well, I'm not sure maybe how we, that needs to proceed. We certainly have the 2106 as proposed by staff. But it does sound like there's at least some support for some amended language. So I'm not sure if it would make sense to maybe, if somebody wants to propose an amendment for voting and. Commissioner Zalinski, you have your hand raised?
Yes, Cherry Yanisak. I would suggest that I'm prepared to move the resolution as drafted. And I would suggest that if there are any desires for amendments on the subjects we've talked about, that once we have a motion and a second, the main motion, then we can consider amendments and vote on amendments. And then if there are amendments that are approved, we can then vote on the amended resolution. So with that, I would move approval of resolution 2106 as proposed by staff.
I would second that.
Let's go ahead and, and have a vote then. Kathy, could you do a roll call?
Commissioner Atkins?
Uh, Cherry Yanisak?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, go, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
I, I think what you should do is ask if there are proposed amendments to this motion. And then if there are, we can, we can consider those, vote on them and then finally vote on an amended resolution if there are amendments approved.
Okay. I, I think that makes sense. Commissioner, any questions or comments about that proceeding in that manner? Any concerns?
Yeah, that's in the minutia of the, of the Roberts rules. And just by moving and seconding, now the, the topic is on the table and it's open for both discussion deliberations and amendments. And then as amendments are approved, then they will get folded into the final vote that we take to cap it all off.
Great. Okay, then, thank you. Let's do that. So any suggestions or discussion, additional discussion or proposed amendments?
Cherry Yanisak, I have a proposed amendment, two of them actually.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I would propose to amend the exemption section to remove item seven. And I would propose to, on the phase in period, move the phase in period from a total of 12 months to a total of 18 months with the, the 50% mark kicking in at month nine.
Thank you. Commissioner Holland?
Thank you, Cherry Yanisak. No further comment there. I, I think Commissioner Finch kind of beat me to it. I, I certainly support the, the first amendment and I'm open to the extension for the rollout.
I guess I'm wondering if we should consider that these as a package, proposed amendments as a package or individually perhaps? Commissioners, any thoughts on that or Commissioner Finch?
I yield to the chair.
Any, any other discussion about that from commissioners?
I would recommend taking them separately. They're pretty separate issues.
Yeah, I guess any other discussion, commissioners, I'd be open to any additional. I guess, I guess I'd ask maybe for any additional discussion that might help inform one way or another on this. Can commissioners have thoughts on that? I, I guess, I, I would propose, I think we should take these separately. So Commissioner Finch, perhaps we'll go with the, the first one that you raised was eliminating the exemption, the, for the, the low income housing. So let me open that up. Any, any commissioner discussion, additional discussion on that? I guess it's, it's been, it's been moved. Is there a second?
I would second that.
Commissioner McGinn, thank you. So I would say then, if there's nothing else, then let's go ahead and have a vote as to the proposed amendment to eliminate the exemption for low income housing. Kathy, go ahead and call, call a roll call.
Commissioner Atkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra?
No.
Commissioner Zalinski?
No.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Cherry Yanisak?
No.
Kathy, I'm not sure if I was keeping track. Did that, did that motion carry or not?
It did carry. We had four votes, yes, and three, no.
Okay. Then the second proposed amendment by Commissioner Finch was with regard to the phase in period extending it from 12 to 18 months with the nine-month mark being the implication or the imposition of the 50% fee. Any further discussion on that, commissioners? Is there a second?
Chair Holland would second that. Or I mean, excuse me, Commissioner Holland.
Thank you. Kathy, let's go ahead and do a roll call on that as well.
Commissioner Atkins?
Nay.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra?
No.
Commissioner Zalinski?
No.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Cherry Yanisak? Okay, that carries. I had three no and four yes.
Okay, any other thoughts on proposed amendments? So it sounds like then we have, uh, before us, uh, uh, Resolution 21-06 with two amendments? And that, I believe, so that's been presented and that's been seconded or do we need another second on that?
I think the first second counts.
First second count, okay. If there's no, nothing further from Commissioners, then we will go ahead and, oh, Commissioner Zalinski.
Uh, yes, I'd just like to say that I think it's very important for the City of Everett to embark on, on park impact fees. Snoke County's been doing it for 25 years or so. Many cities in the county have been doing it for a long time. So although I didn't support the amendments, I still support the overall resolution and think we should move forward with this.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners?
I, I would just second, uh, Commissioner, sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner Holland.
I, I would just, I would just second, uh, Commissioner Zalinski's, uh, uh, original motion with the two amendments.
Thank you. As would I, I'll add that. Um, if nothing else, let's go ahead and Kathy, call through for a vote.
Commissioner Atkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Labra?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Cherry Yanisak?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Great, thank you everybody.
Could I interject real quick here?
Yes, that, oh, Mr. Leonard, go ahead.
I just wanted to say I appreciate all the thanks from, from, from the, uh, Commission to the staff, um, but I also wanna just thank the Commission for all of their work and, uh, I appreciate you taking a look at this and your really thoughtful questions and, uh, I just wanna say thank you.
Great, well, thank you to, yeah, thank you everybody who, who contributed. A, a, a big, a lot, a lot of work went into that. Uh, we do have one other agenda item tonight, uh, item number seven, amendment to, uh, setback provisions. Uh, Becky, is that your presentation tonight?
It is, and I just need to get my slideshow going here. Give me just a second. Can everybody see my screen?
Yep. Yeah.
Okay. Um, well, thank you, planning Commissioners, and I, um, really appreciate the discussion that you just had on the, uh, park impact fees and, um, and all of the questions. It's very helpful and I hope as we, uh, move through our comprehensive plan that, um, that we have more discussions like that. So tonight, um, as Yorick kinda previewed for us, um, as staff has used the rethink zoning that was adopted late last year, um, and it was a complete overhaul, so it's not surprising that as we go through, um, and try to implement some of these provisions that we would find, uh, things that need clarified or potential corrections or maybe the wording isn't having the intended, uh, outcome that we expected. And so, uh, this is the first of, uh, many, uh, code amendment proposals that we'll be bringing for, forward. Um, we are doing this particular one, uh, rather quickly because, um, it is affecting a project that had been in pre-design prior to rethink zoning and, um, and so as you'll see, uh, one of the provisions changed and that affected the, um, the project design. So, um, I think we are trying to, uh, batch these together, uh, in a way that makes sense, um, and, uh, get them through and done as quickly as possible. And primarily, as Yorick mentioned, there will be, um, corrections or, uh, clarifications. Sometimes it's, uh, making sure we've got the right citation or making a citation so that we can make the code more clear and simplify processes, uh, but there may be an occasion where, um, it would make sense to propose something that would be, uh, more in the lines of a, of a policy change or, or shift. So, anyway, here we go. So our first batch of amendments is in the chapter 19-06, which really focuses on lots, how big lots can be, uh, focuses on setbacks, um, and other dimensions, uh, that are in the zoning code or in the development regulations. So the first one, uh, really is to make sure that we point people that are trying to develop in, uh, single families and it is related to the minimum lot area, that when they're trying to develop on a small lot under 5,000 square feet, that they understand that there are some special provisions for those small lots. And so we're pointing them in the direction of the code citation, the code sections that would apply to them. So that really is just adding some clarification to that. Um, I guess I could stop here and see if there are any questions on this particular amendment?
Any questions Commissioners? Sounds like now, go ahead Becky.
Right. Uh, and so the, uh, has to do with an interior side yard setback. So as you know, when, uh, the Metro Everett Plan was, was created, there were sections in the code that specifically referred to development standards for, uh, development in the metro area. And there on the right, you see the boundaries of Metro Everett. Um, one of those provisions had to do with the interior lot line in the urban residential zones. So it allowed a zero lot line basically on the side and that, uh, allowed more usage of the land and of course, you know, it would, uh, require that the development would have to meet life safety standards in terms of building separations and materials, um, and then the upper floors would, uh, would be setback. Um, when rethink happened, um, there was some combining of other UR zones or other multifamily zones throughout the city, so just creating two different multifamily zones, the UR3 and the UR4. The UR4 primarily, you will see after rethink, uh, that they are around the periphery of the Metro Everett subarea. Um, and you, as you can see in the code vow, that, uh, five-foot setback was reinstated for those two zones, which was different than what pre-rethink had. So we're suggesting, uh, proposing that, um, we allow the no interior side setback in the Metro Everett again, so that restores the rethink zoning standard. It applies to any building within Metro Everett as appropriate and it is, does meet the intent really of the, the Metro Everett subarea plan. Um, so with that, I will see if there are any questions or any clarifications I could make with that particular amendment.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Thanks Cherry Yanisak. Uh, Commissioner Holland here.
Go ahead.
Uh, Becky, does, does this affect, um, you know, there was a lot of discussion related to setbacks and stepbacks and all that stuff related to historical zones and I'm just thinking, you know, around Pacific and all that stuff. Would this impact any of that or no?
Um, the, the his, that's a great question and I will make sure that I, um, go through that, uh, section of the code, but I don't think that it will affect anything in the historic overlays. Again, um, Commissioner Holland, I will check that for you before I come back, when I come back for the public hearing. Great question.
Any other questions? Okay, go ahead.
So, um, the last one as we're going through our, um, 19-06, there are some exceptions to setbacks. Uh, this isn't a result of rethink, but this is more of a result of, uh, sort of how we've been im, have implementing this code for, for many years. This relates to, um, heat pumps, air conditioning, swimming pool pumps, other similar mechanical equipment, um, that typically we will see in the, uh, in the setbacks on a residential lot. So, um, we're proposing getting rid of the requirement to go through a, a modification process. It's a fairly, uh, minor decision. A modification development standard process really does add time and effort on both the staff and the applicant and I don't know that there's been an instance where it has not been approved. Um, in addition to that, um, some of the screening techniques that we've seen, because we're not very prescriptive about what those should be and, um, understanding that if the equipment, if we, uh, limit it to a six-feet in height, that we could mitigate any real visual screening, uh, or I'm sorry, visual impacts, uh, from other properties of the street, uh, and therefore proposing to get rid of the screening requirement as well as the process that you would have to go through to get a modification and just simply allow it within that three feet, uh, outright in any, um, any of the setbacks. Uh, the exception to that is, um, it cannot be located within three feet of any, um, rear lot line where there's no alley or it needs to be also three feet on a side lot. So, and with that, I will take questions or, uh, if I can provide any more clarification on this proposal.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Uh, Commissioner Finch?
Uh, I understand the comment about the screening, although it, it strikes me that it doesn't add substantial cost, especially when one is installing air conditioning. Um, and I think it does provide, um, at least, uh, uh, it, it looks better, I think, to neighbors and passersby. So that would be something that I would consider adding back in, um, but other than that, I have no, no questions.
Uh, this is Commissioner McGinn. I would agree with Commissioner Finch's comment about screening and I would also recommend that it be added back in.
So we'll do a little bit more work on that one. This came from our land use team, so the folks who focus on permit reviews and, um, it was, uh, as Becky said, partly a, a streamlining thing if there's a modification authority that is given to the department and we frequently grant it, then may as well just, uh, change that in code. Um, we have heard that the screening that gets ultimately used on these, you can imagine if you're looking at that unit right there and you've got like, uh, a rusty trellis that's kind of duct taped together, that would meet the technical term for screening, but it would look worse than that right there. Um, I will try, but I, I realize that this is, um, we could convey that a, a little bit better or try to find some examples, so we'll try to do that over the next couple of weeks as much as we can.
Commissioners Zalinski, if you're hand raised?
Yes, thank you Cherry Yanisak. Uh, I just have a question about noise because these condenser units can be a little noisy and I'm wondering, is there any provision about proximity to neighboring windows?
Um, there is not, there is a, however, a, um, threshold there, that last bullet point, that it has to, um, cannot exceed the maximum permissible noise level in the city's code. I don't know exactly what that is. I could certainly, um, give that detail for you.
It'll be higher than you'd want next to your window. I have a couple more questions. I'd also love to...
That's really tricky with... Go ahead.
I, I was just saying we have a couple more questions, but I'd also love to hear if anybody has kind of personal experience with this. I promised, uh, Steve Inglesby, our land use planning manager, I'd have my eyes open to this as I go about town for examples of these types of mechanical equipment when they do and don't, uh, cause issues. I'd love to hear if anybody has any personal experience with these either on the experiencing it, having one, developing or just seeing it around.
Hi Yorick, this is Commissioner, Commissioner Holland. Um, I've experienced a lot of complaints about these in the past. I think the new units are, um, rated real well and don't cause a lot of noise. I, I guess my only concern is, or my question, I guess, first is, is this really for residential units, which I, I think it is? And then secondly, if you have a hedge or a fence or anything in between your property and the neighbor's property, um, you have established setbacks, which are typically five and five, so 10 feet separation as to whether or not we should be regulating, uh, efficiencies for residential units. So I, I guess my question is, is, is this really residential or is this more a commercial type of thing? Looks like a residential.
Uh, yeah, I believe it is just, just for residential. I'll have to confirm that.
Definitely what I've been thinking about is residential. But I believe it would apply to commercial equipment.
Yeah, Commissioner Holland here. I, normally the commercial stuff, you know, is required to be screened with, you know, different things. I just, I hate to see a property owner have to invest, uh, in a linear fence along their property line or, or whatever it may be. Like I said, I, I think these new units are, um, not very obnoxious and, you know, the city does have a noise ordinance that requires that it's under, uh, certain decibels for, you know, extended period of time. There's, you can exceed that for low periods of time, so just curious.
We can provide some clarity on that in the, at the public hearing on the second.
But I, I, I must say, the most of the complaints we get is in areas where it is next to somebody's bedroom or something like that. I don't know... in areas where it is next to somebody's bedroom or something like that. I don't know how you regulate, you know, where something can be placed in order to, you know, to your adjacent property owner. But there still are noise ordinances that are in effect that aren't forcible.
Yeah, so for residential zones, the limit is 55 to 60 decibels during the day, and then subtract 10 from that at night. So about 45 decibels at night from your neighbor. That equates to suburban area at night is 40, and household refrigerator is 55. It's significantly quieter than the refrigerator in your house. This is from a random website. It's not scientific. I don't know how much, so we're talking setbacks on the order of five to 10 feet, as you said. Five to 10 feet for a noisy piece of equipment isn't going to do a lot. Better, if it is exceeding the noise ordinance, make sure that they have a well-functioning piece of equipment. I could see that screening could include sound screening too, although that's not the purpose of it. But all good things for us to consider with what seemed like a fairly innocuous piece of code.
In my experience, the planning staff is routed like, commercial units, like multifamily, whether it's, you know, a bunch of multifamily, or just even small, you know, six-unit apartments for infill, or things like that, and to ensure that they're in compliance, especially with adjacent neighbors, and they have a single-family residence or something like that. Regulating these things that are at a single-family level, I don't know, just seems anyways, just seems inequitable for, in my opinion.
I know you're still looking at some stuff there, Becky, but I thought Commissioner Lavra had a question as well?
Oh, it wasn't a question. I was thinking about responding to Yorick's question about our experience. Well, the city, when I had my heat pump company come put in, the city did come and inspect and determine that it was in a place where it should be, which is, I have narrow setbacks, but it's outside of three feet from the fence, the neighbor's fence. But my neighbor on the other side, there's more space, and they put their heat pump, heat exchanger on my side of their house, and it's probably like, hmm, please, maybe it's 10 feet from my house, but there's no fence there. And they mentioned it to me, and I said I didn't really care, but someone came out and made them move it. So the city is regulating those things pretty friendly. And it does look better without that.
Yeah.
And there was no screening for that heat pump. My side of the 93, I was to a fence.
Any other Commissioners? Thank you, Commissioner Lavra. Any other questions or comments? I think we'll open it up then. If there's anybody from the public here attending tonight who wish to add anything on either of these three proposed amendments, now would be the time to do that. And like I said, we do have a small crowd, so just go ahead and unmute yourself and speak up, and we can hear from you.
Hi there. This is Ishmael Mohammed. I would like to say a few things.
Go ahead. Thank you.
First of all, I commend the planning team, planning director and Becky for taking up these proposed changes into the rethink zoning. As Becky said, that these changes, and applying for modifications adds time for the staff and for the applicant, and it drags into two or four months sometimes just going through those simple modifications. So thank you so much for taking that. The third proposed amendment for the for the heat pumps. Heat pumps nowadays has become very inexpensive. The PUD, Snohomish PUD, is offering a lot of rebate for it, and the way they are designed, they are very efficient for, and they are so efficient to replace the air furnace in the homes. So I think that's a very good, that we don't, and they are very good-looking, and sometimes we see them even mounted on the first floor or second floor, or even in the balconies. So I think it's a good move that we actually don't need to screen. The unit example which is shown here, this is more like a commercial unit. The most common units are rectangle units, and they are good-looking, and they are very sound-efficient. Sound, like, very efficient, and we have just installed on three or four projects, and they are they are amazing, that the electricity, the power-saving, and energy-saving, and it works as an air conditioner and a heater. So having a screen on top of that, around that unit, in a residential, would be something an extra burden for the builder or developer. That's all for my comments today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. Any other members of the public wishing to wishing to comment? It looks like there are none, so Becky, or your staff, any additional to wrap this up?
We'll provide some clarity again around the around this particular issue related to the mechanical equipment and heat pumps, and bring that back to you for your public hearing, but we are scheduled for November 2nd to have this public hearing on these three amendments, and so that we can move these forward to the council.
Okay, great. Any final closing remarks from the Commissioners? All right, well, great meeting. Thank you, everybody. We will go ahead and call this meeting adjourned.
So, good night.